The whole point of having them turned in is the responsibility at this age level is still a little weak and so.
And I'm not complaining about that, I'm just curious about numbers because there has been some discussion with the Technology Committee about a bring your own device policy. So I'm just kind of curious how many of your kids have access to that? So if there is that policy developed for students eventually, I mean fifth and sixth grade, okay, maybe not so much, seventh and eighth grade, maybe more, I'm just kind of curious.
And you know what we could do is we could pull and ask how many have them at home that would be available. That's something we haven't done.
I think that would be a surprise.
And just more.
Yeah, I think there are probably a lot of them that have them, maybe at home, but they don't.
Well, I was just curious if you knew. Thanks.
Anything else? I'd like to thank you all for taking time to listen to this.
Thank you.
As Dr. Hopkins indicated, you guys are doing a great job with a difficult situation that was handed to you. I think it's awesome what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I can see something consent is a pleasure to ask.
Any questions for Scott? Those favorable questions, yes. Both. Doctor Doos.
Good evening. It's that time of year again to start talking about state assessments and we usually come to you at this time and share with you a little bit about the upcoming testing season. This year is a little bit different because there are so many changes happening in the state assessment program in the state. So I want to share with you what some of those changes are. A little bit of history to start with. Since the adoption of the Common Core, the kids' college career ready standards several years ago, we have known that this year would be a transition year. The old state assessment, former state assessment retired at the end of last year, so we've known that that would be done. And we knew that this year would be a transition into something new. A one-year transition was kind of the plan. And then the plan was to move toward the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And the Smarter Balance, for those of you who are not familiar with it, is one of two consortia across the nation developing Common Core aligned assessments. Kansas was one of the lead states on it and it included, unlike our old assessment, it included things like short answers or performance tasks. In other words, things that may not have a single correct answer, there may be multiple ways to approach something and get a reasonable answer and be able to explain your thinking. In December, the State Board of Education threw a wrench in that plan. And what they did was pulled the state out of Smarter Balance and instead gave the contract to the Center for Educational Testing and Evaluation, C E T E, which is the organization that for the last 30 years or so has written the state assessment. And it's based out of KU, so it's a local, in-state organization. What that did was change the nature of what the assessment's going to be for the next couple of years at least. The transition assessment will include multiple choice items, it will also include technology-enhanced items modeled after the Smarter Balanced Plan, but those are the only two types of items that it will have this year, where we'd expected maybe a little bit broader range of questions. Both of those types have a single correct answer that can be machine scored. So as we've had in the past, we'll have single correct answers that we'll be able to score and get a score for students relatively quickly. It will also push back, though, to 2016 when we'll have the full Common Core College Career Ready Assessment in place and ready to go in the state. Here are some things that are new this year. There's a lot that's changed in the world of instruction and curriculum. Every major core area has new standards over the last two or three years. So new this year, the old assessments are gone, so we're looking at new transition assessments that we've known about. However, we've eliminated the Smarter Balance, the transition test will evolve over the next couple of years. What we have this year will be built upon next year and again the following year. We have a new test engine, a new browser, if you will, for students to use to take the test. It's called KITE, Kansas Interactive Testing Engine. So that's something new that teachers and students are going to have to learn. It's a new way to enter students into the system, new way to get teachers assigned to it, a new way to add accommodation, so all around, a new experience. Not only is the state assessment different this year, but the alternative assessment, that tests for 1% of the most severely disabled students, is different this year. It's called the Dynamic Learning Map and it is also a product that's developed out of C E T E. I think there are nine states that are involved in that project, Kansas being obviously one of them. But that's new this year. And the CAM, which was another type of alternate assessment for another 2% of students on IEPs, has been retired. So all of this is new for our staff and our students to try to take in this year. Here are the assessments that will be given. Math, English Language Arts, what we formerly called reading. In the future, at least, the idea is it will be more than reading, it will include writing as well. Science will be given this year, but you'll notice it says "based on former standards." This test actually will be based on standards that have been retired and we're no longer teaching. So we're required to give the science assessment. The state didn't have time to develop something aligned to the new standards, so we're giving a test based on the old ones. We've got the D L M, we have alternate science, the alternate version of the science, so it's also an old version. And then KELPA, which is the Kansas English Language Proficiency Assessment. KELPA is given to all of our students who are classified as English Language learners, as well as those who have graduated out of ESL and are within two years of having moved on or met proficiency requirements. So we're required to monitor those students. All in all, we're nearing 50% of the student body that has to take KELPA. And that's a test that's given one-on-one, four parts, a very labor-intensive kind of assessment. Yes, sir?
Can you explain? The science versus alternative science?
Sure. The science is the test that everybody takes in grades four, seven, and 11. Alternate science is for students on IEPs, Special Education Plans, so it's that 1%. Testing window has been shortened this year. Typically, in the past, we've started testing around the second week of February, this time it's the second week of March, when most of the assessments start. You can see there are a few exceptions to that. KELPA actually started today, the window opened. But for the most part, the window's going to be March 10th to April 25th. I mentioned KITE. The system is now loaded on computers, thanks to the work of the SysOps, Systems Operators. Teachers now can get in and get familiar with it, they can give students some exposure to this new format before the actual test. And all assessments except KELPA, and I should have added alternate science, will be given on this system. All staff involved in assessments have to go through ethics training. We've now done that at every building, I think, except Charles Stone's. We've got some people who need to do makeup sessions, but we're nearing the end of that. Staff has to sign off that they agree to abide by the testing ethics before they actually give the test. Okay, looking now to the future. We talked about this year being the transition assessment. Next year will be an enhanced transition assessment. In other words, they'll take what they did this year and add to it. And then 2016, some further enhancements will be added and that will be the new assessment, the new college and career ready assessment. The other thing that we haven't really mentioned yet is what happens at the high school level. And this doesn't happen until 2016. But the plan that the state approved, and Sally Cobble talked about it when she was here, is to allow high school students to select from a menu what their state assessment will be. It could be a college and career-aligned assessment, depending on their pathway. It could be the state assessment developed by C E T E. It could be ACT, for example. But whatever assessments they would select has to be pre-approved. And at this moment, I called KSDE today, that's kind of their grand plan, but right now there are no other assessments approved to date. They haven't gone through that process yet. What we don't know at this point, lots of changes happening, still some things we're not sure what's going to happen. One of the biggest and most important is, this whole plan to move this direction and to allow the high schools some flexibility is dependent upon approval from the U.S. Department of Ed. We have to meet the requirements of our federal waiver, which is in the process of being renewed. So what the U.S. Department of Ed is going to do with all of this, we just don't know yet. They have met, I believe it's three times, or maybe four now, to talk about it. No decisions have been made to this point. Another question that we're not sure about is, making this change away from Smarter Balance, will that alleviate some concerns that, whether they were real or perceived, people had about access to student data? When we were in a multiple-state consortium, what happens to that data that sees it? By now keeping it in the state borders, we'll see what happens in terms of how people feel about where the data goes. The region's institutions in the state had previously looked at what Smarter Balance was doing and had said that they would accept certain scores on that test as demonstrating student readiness for credit-bearing courses. In other words, testing out of remedial courses at the college level. With the change in assessment, what are the regions going to do with that? We don't know yet. What we do know, what we believe, and Dr. Hopkins said this just a few minutes ago, is that we need to concentrate on instruction, we need to concentrate on student thinking and learning. And if we do that, if we do a good job of that, the test will take care of itself. We're on the right track, we need to stay focused on that student learning piece. And with that, a welcome in question.
And that was going to be my first question, is with the enhanced transition assessment, enhanced assessment, new assessment.
Right.
My question, are we falling behind or are we gaining ahead? You know, are the teachers able to constantly learn new assessments and not fall behind?
Well, our answer to that has been this, and that's teach your curriculum, get your kids' thinking, metacognition, we've talked about. That's where we want to put our effort and if we do a good job with that, give the kids, sure, some exposure to the format of the test, so it's not a surprise, but let the curriculum drive what we're doing as opposed to, has happened too many times in too many places, let the test drive what happens.
Yeah, I was just starting to get frustrated through the slides until that slide went there. So that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
I can imagine what the teachers and instructors and everybody on staff is doing.
Yeah. And I can say that, I can say concentrate on your instruction, concentrate on curriculum, but I also know that teachers have been conditioned over the last decade that the test is important, so.
I thought you were going to say something else.
But it's going to take some time, I think, to move away from the idea that we have to focus so exclusively on the test.
So how do the teachers feel now, after the state's decision to move away from Smarter Balance, right?
Uh huh.
How do the teachers now feel where they're at with curriculum, with what we're doing? Because I know there was some negativity and some rhetoric about it.
Well, you'll get a range of responses to that. I think in general, teachers are happy that we aren't placing so much emphasis on the assessment, but again, it's what we're kind of used to, so that's a little uncomfortable too. In general, I think they feel like we're going in the right direction. We're getting a lot of teacher involvement in some of these things we're trying to do to build that ownership.
I'd like to take advantage of the start of the year. What do you hear from your teachers?
I heard some frustration, you know, because they were looking forward to doing the Smarter Balance, they had trained on it, and were going to give her back to do more training. So that was a little frustration for them. But at the same time, I think as administrators, we have to keep the focus on this. And it's a little change of mindset for them about don't place importance on the test, but on your instruction, because at this time, several years ago, that was all we were focused on. And so it's a little bit of a change of mindset, but overall, I think they're staying positive.
I'm concerned about citizens' stones. I mean, there are--
I am too. I think I know you're ready.
Is this now going to put, I mean, they were on a three-year plan with the idea that we were going to have a, I'm sorry, this is probably my frustration speaking too, a real test next year, and now we're not looking at a real test until 2016. Is that pushing that back out for them? How are they dealing with this?
They're dealing with it very professionally and very positively, but I know it's frustrating. Even on the old system, if we were looking at the Smarter Balance next year, we were still looking at three different tests in three consecutive years. And then we were supposed to make sense of that somehow as a state and make determinations about whether or not student schools go on or off focus school, priority school status. Now we have at least an additional year of a different test.
Does the state realize what they're doing to the focus schools? Are they owning up to it? I mean, what's your answer to it?
I don't know that they have. I've expressed that to them, I know I'm not alone in expressing that. They are dealing with the situation as best they can. I think they've got a lot of issues they're dealing with to be exact.
We know, Sally Cobble knows.
Yeah.
So that's what we can do and we've done what we can do as far as that goes. And she voted against the successful change, so that's important.
What part of the issue with regions, is there been preliminary discussions, what kind of feedback are there?
I don't, I haven't had any discussions recently with regions. I don't know, Dr. Ath, if you've had any more recent than this. So, not yet.
There's years here, if that's all right. Our district tests the PLAN ACT and Explore ACT in the eighth and 10th respectively. Do all students get tested?
At present, I want to say eighth grade, yes, but 10th grade is voluntary, but I'm not positive that that's correct.
If it's voluntary, does that mean that the parent has to pay for the test? Okay. Well, we can also use at least the PLAN scores to kind of keep a watch since all those students are tested.
ACT is also in the process of changing its testing and so, at least at one time, and this may have changed, but they were planning to end those and go with a different test, ACT test as well.
And I just learned today that SAT is as well. And they're going to change their testing format pretty drastically. In fact, I'm taking the, they've all been interviewing tomorrow, about the SAT and ACT and some of the changes that they're going to be making.
What timeline are we talking about?
They didn't give a chance.
Since I have a soft part changer, I've got to interrupt.
Probably not that fast.
Okay.
From what I can gather, from what I'm reading, it looks like it's going to be more parallel with the college career ready standards. They're talking about eliminating some of the vocabulary that no one knew what the definition was for some of the vocabulary words on the SAT. They're going to try to make it more real life, more practical. And they gave examples of some of the words that is going to be changed, where it's going to be changed to. I personally think it's a move in the right direction, making child's education more relevant. They're thinking about more of a particular goal.
But we'll at least watch the PLAN scores and see if we're noticing any kind of trend.
Absolutely.
Obviously, we're not testing the state's students year to year, but we're testing our district's diligence.
Correct.
So that's good.
And I appreciate you leaning, sitting on top of it, and ahead of the curve as much as possible, without, the wheel's running off, so thank you.
And I hope the teachers understand that this district and this board is completely behind what we have to do. We're behind college and career readiness and we were behind Smarter Balance, but we've got to get redirected and this is what it is. But we understand their frustration. We're worse freshmen is, they are, almost. I don't know if it's freshman.
Thank you.
Will this be a big topic at the National School Board meeting?
I don't know. Very likely.
I think we're going to see college and career readiness days out there in the forefront because everybody in the country is a little toward that kind of path, for the most part. Forty-five states.
A number of states have pulled out of the PARK, which is the other consortium. Smarter Balance was farther ahead, is farther ahead. So that might make it more of a topic too, if there are states unhappy with PARK.
Well, Tom and Alex are going to go to that meeting along with Dr. Ath, are you going?
Correct.
Are you going, Dr. Dennis?
I'm not.
But it'd be great, I'm sure, to bring information back. So I'm glad you guys are representing this at that meeting.
All right. Under unfinished business, we do need to take action, see if we go on the pilot program presented by Chris Carter's last meeting, so at this time we'll open it up for discussion and questions.
May I make a comment first?
Sure.
Because I had a board member that I talked with, and I want to kind of do some background because the board member came asking, among the lines of, how did the intermediate schools come about in this district? The best I can find out, before the intermediate schools were built, the elementaries were overly crowded. And so it became a choice of what they did to answer that. And at that time, this school district was growing leaps about. Garden City was one of the fastest-growing communities in the state of Kansas at that time. And as you know, during that time, actually, we had two packing plants, full speed in this community. So it's my understanding that the intermediate schools were built to answer the overcrowdedness of the elementary schools. Now, they could have had a choice of building two more K-6 schools, because we were K-6 at that time, and they chose to go with the intermediate schools. And here's where my information is kind of like this, when you're trying to get a history lesson where it's not been written down anywhere. I had a parent tell me today that, we had a parent, a kid that was entering the intermediate school at that time, that the reason it was done, what they was told is that they felt this was the best organizational plan at the time, not taking into account transitions and how detrimental that was. So whether that research was out there on transitions at that time, 25 years ago, I don't know, wasn't here. So, but the two intermediate schools were built to answer the overcrowdedness at the elementary and it was put in effect then to go this route as opposed to adding two K-6 schools. And as you know, if they had added two K-6 schools, we'd have two elementaries across the street from one another with Charles Stone's, because that land was, I think, donated to us. So that's what I know in reference to the history that I've been able to find here in the last few days.
Sure, just a couple of comments. I, you know, I don't know if I'm against the looping program. My concern is that we've had the fifth, sixth grade centers for 17, 18 years, you know, so why, in my opinion, I think those schools are doing the same work for students. So why go backwards? It's my understanding, again, that we do this pilot program, monitor for five to seven years, and if it worked, then we would bring fifth and sixth graders back to the elementary one. Is that right?
Not necessarily. That could be the outcome. It could be the outcome that we leave things as they are and allow that building to continue.
But why would we do that? Why would we allow one school to have a better advantage than all the other students? I mean, if the looping's the greatest program and we do the research and say, yes, our kids are being more successful in looping, why would we say, well, we're not going to, we don't have no other place to do looping and you others have to stay at the fifth, sixth grade center?
Well, just a point of clarification. This isn't about looping. It's just a coincidence that Ape Hubert Elementary uses that strategy in their school of looping. This is about adding fifth grade next year to Ape Hubert and sixth grade the following year as a pilot program. The only reason looping is even mentioned is because that's who Ape Hubert is. They choose to deliver their instruction differently than the other elementaries. And when they were Garfield, they looped as well. So this is about adding that and piloting it and trying to see what information we garner over the next five or six years.
But again, if that information proves to be, these kids are going to be more successful in an elementary school, why would we not let all the other kids be put back in elementary schools?
I tell you, that's a board's decision.
But how could we if our elementary schools are all full right now? We have one classroom at Gertrude Walker that they split the classroom in half because they're overcrowded. There is no more room. One teacher's teaching on the state. How is that good for our kids? And how can we bring a fifth and sixth grade center to Gertrude Walker when they're already overcrowded?
I think if you look, though, at the reorganization, that's our fourth goal, any overcrowding would eventually be taken care of because of the reorganization of the schools. I think my question was, was almost, what if we decide next year that we want to go K to five, six to eight, but we've approved this pilot that says Ape Hubert gets to go to sixth grade in 15 and 16? You know, I think something that, you know, I've discussed with Dr. Ath, and from what I've seen of the curriculum and I've talked to some fifth and sixth grade teachers, is that it seems like the curriculum is geared K to five and then six to eight. So what if we did K to five schools? And Ape Hubert's K to five, Gertrude Walker's K to five, but then we have three six to eight schools, which takes care of Dr. Ath's concern too. I think of having two elementary schools across the street from each other, because one of those may be able to shift to a six to eight center. So you're not necessarily seeing the overcrowding. I think that's taking things almost two or three steps ahead before we know what organization is going to work well with our district. I mean, it may come to be that we think having K through eight is the perfect model and then we're going to reorganize and figure out K to eight schools. I doubt that's going to happen, that's an extreme, but, I mean, we don't know what two or three years in the future is going to be yet, but I think what we've seen with the data that is there is that eliminating transitions is the best thing for our kids. And I don't know why they thought what they did. I know when I was in sixth grade in Shawnee Mission, they were looking at this thing about moving six to eight to our middle schools. And I can tell you all the sixth graders were against it. We wanted to stay in there. And I can tell you all the sixth graders were against it, we wanted to stay in elementary. But the big thing that we were talking about back then was the lack of transitions. It was better for us to stay K through six at that time. And getting rid of that transition, I think, is going to help our kids.
Well, we've done, we've done the fifth, sixth-grade center for eighteen years. Seven years from now, we've done, we'll be doing it for twenty-four years. And in my opinion, I think our kids are doing really well. As we heard the presentation from Sits tonight. I mean, our graduation's up, our dropout rate's down. I mean, I think, I think, hearing the presentation last week, I think we just got to be cautious and look at, if this works, how is it going to look in seven years or five years when we have to make a decision, hey, that is the best way our kids will learn? I mean, what would be the cost to changing those schools if we went from fifth, sixth grade and made those schools a K through sixth grade? I mean, there has to be a cost for restroom changes, elementary, getting little kids into a fifth, sixth-grade center. You know, we haven't even talked about any of that. I mean, maybe you guys have the plan already, but I haven't heard.
And the looping thing, I asked that question to Starter about, because I know it's a product of Will Sprock, like he talks, and it's very successful. And we always heard about it, and that school getting a lot of awards. So my question was, if they did decide to take on fifth grade, how would the looping succeed after that? I don't think we would make any decision without knowing all the costs and the transitions and the boundary lines that are involved as a pilot program. I'm excited that the teachers are looking for something like that to better educate our kids. And we're also hearing, the less transitions for students are a good thing. We're hearing directly from the teachers. It hasn't come from one of us seven yet, you know? So I would, after all the other plans and curriculum and all the other ideas that we heard are all pretty much, even the common core, are all coming from teachers, I'd like to at least hear it out before I say no or yay. And see what they got to bring to the table. I think they got some very great ideas. Kids today are a lot different than kids were fifteen and sixteen, seventeen years ago. Doesn't say it's right or wrong, but I think it's something we definitely need to take a deep look at.
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent. I, you know, I just think we have to go with caution with hearing just one presentation last week and then today we're ready to vote that we're going to do that. I mean, when people ask me, so what will the picture look like in five to seven years? You know, we need to have some kind of idea of what that picture will look like.
I guess my thought as part of this process is, that's how we're going to learn what it's going to look like. If we use this to gain information or whatever in seven years, whether it's us on the board or the next board, you know, if we stick true to we're doing the decisions best for kids, then they work through the process of, okay, how do we make the facilities, which is always an issue, or to be best for the kids.
Well, you know what? I have a good job board, I'm sorry, Tom, but I have a good job board back from meeting at Al's Brown last week with Dr. Carter and Dr. Atha. And that was one of the questions that one of the teachers brought up, or would we get a chance at pilot in the fifth grade, like Ape Hubert might get a chance? Or how is that going? And I spoke up, we have decided, we have heard all the data, the information, we're still discussing it.
Georgia Matthews asked the same thing, because they're looking at lower numbers there, and they have the ground to be able to handle fifth grade, and they would love to be able to have that opportunity as well. I mean, the fact that our teachers are coming to us and saying, this is a good idea, let's do this. We've been a board that has always looked at the grassroots efforts, you know, kindergarten-ready, first grade-ready. These are all things that are coming from teachers wanting to approve our district. And, you know, even though fifth and sixth-grade centers are working fine, our students are progressing, and they're doing well, we're also not a school district who's willing to rest on our morals either. We're always want to push forward. What else can we do? What can we do to make this better? And, you know, I don't see it as taking a step back and going back. I see this as, okay, that's great, this will work now, you know, and maybe in five years we do this. But then, I don't know what twenty years is going to look like, you know? Who knows? Maybe we'll go back to fifth and sixth grade and seventh and eighth-grade centers because that's what the best thing is for the students in twenty years from now. I don't know. Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball. But right now, based off of the information that we've been getting from our teachers right now, it seems like this is the best way to be going.
I just had it, based on what Laura said about, this is a two-year plan, and I was wondering if it impacts it too much to split it into deciding on the fifth grade or voting on that separately and then maybe looking at it again after you've had some experience. Since you're right, there could be some other changes that would affect our school. From my own perspective, I think it's important that we have some uniformity between the same-level schools across our district. I think that students going to one school should have a very similar experience to those going to the other schools. And I do see that this allows us to make use of some facility space, since we are so restricted on trying to add that. So I think we've got to look for ways to use the facilities we have. So I just wondered if maybe we could step this along rather than trying to do a two-year thing, or that just really is problematic. Really, you know, our planning now is for next school year, and we're just considering it. So I was thinking maybe we could delay the decision on this, I'm starting to wish.
Well, and not to make a comment. The reason for our proposal being to add fifth and sixth grade is because we were looking at eliminating transitions. And the way our configuration of the school district is, is that you have fifth and sixth grade at one center. So we didn't want to be presumptuous, say, hey, our proposal's going to change everything. You know, we want, that's why we added fifth and sixth grade. Would we love to have just sixth grade from now? Absolutely. And make the decision later for sixth grade? You know, that's a decision that you can make. But that's the reason we made our proposal for fifth and sixth grade is because the research shows to eliminate that transition. There's already all kinds of research showing that looping does work, and that's why the decision was made to continue that. But what, it's like what Laura said, what's exciting is that after attending that model school conference, we had teachers, one teacher that went with me, that said, how can we make our school even better? And that, to me, is exciting. And, you know, all the staff is on board with having fifth grade on there. You saw the presentation, not all of them are a hundred percent at fifth grade. But I believe that because what is best for our students is to eliminate that transition, that's why they're on board.
My concern was just what Laura had brought up, is that if we went to a six-to-eight model, that we'd still have that transition, but it would be moved to between fifth and sixth instead of between six and seven. And if we were considering that in the next year, then it would probably be, you know, easier to look at that across the board. But, I don't know, I suppose this is always changeable.
Are we your teachers, Starter?
Yes.
Are we your teachers not so in favor of going to the sixth grade? Only fifty-seven percent of them said they were in favor of that. Why is that?
A lot of it was concerned of the room and where we would place classrooms and things like that. But as, when we were looking at it, you know, we have plenty of rooms for, to add both fifth and sixth grade. There's just, you know, the things logistically within the building that we would have to move around.
I think it makes perfect sense to at least do a two-year transition to get fifth and sixth grade, like Mr. Starter said. The objective is to test to see if we can eliminate the transition, if that makes an impact. So that makes logical sense. I'd like to see the pilot at least have those two years agreed upon as a board tonight. I also see that, I guess I want to confirm, if we find out sooner than later that this model is working and we're seeing student achievement go through the roof, we're not going to hold back.